We're good? Well, I will. I'm going to introduce the public. All right. Ready to go? All right, well, I want to welcome the public here to the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen, March 23rd. And just so for the public's benefit, we are having a... The rest of our board is attending by Zoom, so you can kind of hopefully see them on the screen. This is an experiment, and we're trying to make do with the technology that we have available currently. But hopefully you'll be able to hear everything going on and potentially see a lot of the discussion going on. We also have a few people in the audience today that are going to be making presentations as well. So, thank you for joining us. And so, let's... To start the meeting, please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, great. And I thought I'd just real quickly... You know, I just wanted to make a few comments briefly about kind of what the purpose of today is. I know that, you know, people in town have been getting a lot of notifications from me about the different changes that have been happening on a day-to-day basis since we entered into this state of emergency. And so, information has been going out by email, as well as we've done several robo calls. So, if you are not getting a robo call, please go to the CT Alerts link on the town website, so you can get those. And then also, or sign up a loved one who maybe is technology savvy, so that they can get those important bits of information as we send them out. And, you know, I think also we're doing a number of email blasts and trying to keep the public as up-to-date as possible through the website on all the changes that are occurring. I think the purpose of today is just to let you know that your town government is working hard for you in trying to keep us safe and healthy and protected during this time of emergency. I know many of you have questions and concerns about what this pandemic is going to mean for you and your families, and are concerned about what the future will entail for you in many areas, including the school system, government services, your job security, and your taxes. We don't have answers to everything today, but we will continue to provide everything that we know to you to make sure that you're informed as things become available. Today's meeting is really just to focus on our efforts on keeping everybody safe, healthy, and at home during this kind of second phase of where we are in the state of emergency. So, some of this might be repetitive, but we thought it's important to just provide another channel of information to the public. We do hope to have additional meetings where we can be more interactive. Unfortunately, we couldn't allow for public comment today, but we're working on ways that we can allow for that going forward. So, stay with us, and I apologize if it's going to be tough to hear or maybe see people sometimes, but we will work hard to make this a better process for future meetings. So, the first person that we've had here today to give an update is Tom Skiris, our superintendent of schools. So, I'll ask Tom to sit here in the hot seat. And you can... Our board members are able to see this. We have a webcam showing here, and then the public will be watching, obviously, through livestream. So, Tom, take it away.
I'm going to greet myself, but that looks like the Brady Bunch to me.
It does.
And Bruce with the Alice. Okay. Thank you, Brad. So, I just start off very briefly with some comments about the collaboration around town. Trent Joseph has been absolutely outstanding, supporting our work in schools. Trent Joseph, thank you. You know, he gets back in a second. It's, you know, instant access to some very important questions and topics. Dr. Karen Goldberg, you know, nursing supervisor Stephanie Leslie have worked with Trent. It's just been a great team. Sam's been great as far as getting us plugged into all of the emergency operations. Bill McMinn has done a lot of that operational side for me. I've been focusing with the staff and the administrators on transitioning from where we are right now, where a short-term closure still. Only been out a week. Feels like a month, if not a week. And we're transitioning from a short-term closure then to what we anticipate to be a very long-term closure, beginning on Monday, March 30th. Tomorrow night, because I don't want to steal any thunder, I have a very comprehensive update for the Board of Education. And that meeting will entail updates in curriculum, our distance online learning program, in special education, which is... It's really complicated things. How do we meet the needs of kids with very unique and challenging learning profiles in a distance learning program, as we do this on the fly in March? We have a facilities update. Those guys have been working around the clock, still keeping the buildings clean, disinfecting and so forth. Art Sickle will also help give an update on how we're supporting the technology of our efforts right now. We anticipate to go live this whole week. Teachers are working to get ready for a launch and go live on Monday, March 30th, with a distance online program for all students K through 12 throughout the entire system. We have some agreements in place with the teachers as far as expectations for what that'll look like, and we hope by no later than the end of the day tomorrow, we'll have something for parents as well. So, we want to make sure there's expectations that are very clear for the learner, as a family, and for the instructor, the teacher, so we're all on the same page when it comes to kind of hours of operation, access, what it looks like. And I'll keep saying all along, it's not going to be perfect. It'll never replicate what we do in a classroom. And if something's not working, we're going to keep revisiting it and make it better. So, that's where we are with the instruction side. We get regular updates from the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Nafel Cardona, who has been absolutely outstanding in this whole process, to understand the conditions that we're all in are very unique. And we get frequent updates through the many executive orders from Governor Lamont and what those implications mean for us. So, it's been helpful to have some of our issues and laws and regulations relaxed so that we can respond. And it's been, you know, an interpretation festival for us as we try to go through and determine, you know, what does this order really mean for us? Can we access a building? Can we not? You know, we rely locally, you know, on Trent for some of those health pieces. We rely locally on our teachers and administrators for some of those interpretations for action and learning. But that seems to change there. We're going to change again at 5:00 o'clock today. So, that's kind of where we are. So, overall, the school system, team is amazing, and they are very, very excited to get started. Our teachers are very excited. They're anxious. They're eager, but they're also anxious. They want to do it right. And there's going to be some false starts, I imagine, along the way, and I just want to be very patient, but I do believe that we'll make the very best of this.
I appreciate that. A couple of questions, because I am a parent of two kids in the school system.
Yeah.
And I've had people just reach out to me, and I know your board, you're going to do a much more detailed briefing with your board tomorrow night. What time will that be?
7:00.
Because that's livestreamed as well, right? So, for any parents watching, you can come back to the same link, and you can see the Board of Education meeting. I'm just curious about, has there been people who don't have enough, you know, separate laptops and everything in their house to accommodate all their kids? Have those been distributed to the community?
Yeah, so what we had asked to do is, I directed any parents who are in need of a device to contact their building principal. We're trying to decentralize as much of all of this as possible. It's quicker, it's more efficient, and we can tailor to individual families that way. So, the building principals have a stock of devices. We've had requests. We are not a one-to-one district, so I caution people to really remember that. We have about 2,700 students, and they're not one-to-one. So, we don't have 2,700 devices for 2,700 students. That said, we have a lot of families with two and three kids, and the model that we're looking at is more of an asynchronous model, where it won't require, if you have three kids, to all be on the same exact time.
That was, I think, a lot of what people were concerned about.
Yeah, and there'll be much more information tomorrow to parent. Now that we've developed this, we thought about this for a few reasons. The first reason is for what you just mentioned. You have multiple kids in a house looking to use a device. We also don't want screen time to grow exponentially during this time period as well. If you have a week, a couple of days like last week at 55 degrees, we want kids to also be able to get away from the screen in a safe way and still be able to engage in something instructionally or recreationally while they're practicing the social distancing rules. The other reason that we really want to be cautious around this is that parents are home, and many of them are working from home. So, to set up an instructional program that requires mom, maybe, and dad to be supporting their student in an online learning program at home while they're supposed to be working is, I think it's unreasonable. So, we're trying to find a way to thread the needles so that work can be done, the kids may support, teachers are available between certain hours, and mom and dad, I'm sure, will support. But we have to be sensitive to the fact that just because you're home as a mom or dad doesn't necessarily mean that you're available to help constructionally. If you're working, you have work expectations. So, as much as we can take that away, the message I've been trying to give our staff is that we're not frontline healthcare workers, but those teachers are so important in providing some sense of normalcy and routine at home. And to have these two weeks in this short-term period and get ready to rev up on Monday provides some structure and some good productive time for kids at home that they won't be mom or dad to supervise, I think especially the little ones, I think we're headed in that direction.
No, it's so complicated, you think? And I applaud your team and all the work that you're doing.
I think all we're missing is line goals at this point.
Yeah.
Every other, you know, variable is marked against us, but we're still...
And, you know, just because it's evolving every day.
Yeah.
And the game keeps changing on us. We think you can go in one direction, and then the rules change. So, I appreciate all the hard work, and I'm eager to obviously see what rolls out tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions, and so tune in tomorrow to the Board of Education, and there'll be many opportunities, I think, to ask and get answers to what I'm sure many parents in this community have questions they will have. So, thank you. I appreciate it. Any board members? Do anybody have any specific questions for Tom?
Greg, Peter?
And I just wanted to... We have our Board of Ed Chair Katie Stein on, so... And she'll be very involved tomorrow. All right. Thank you very much, Tom. I appreciate it. So, the next item on the agenda is really a lot of things to talk about. It's kind of got a broad topic base of updating the town response to the pandemic, like the state directives. So, I thought I'll just spend a few minutes talking about the many executive orders that have come out of Hartford. And obviously, one of the most important ones that kicks into effect at 8:00 tonight is the State Home Stay Safe Initiative. I'm sure many of you have heard about it on the news or seen we've sent out email distributions about what this means. And there'll be a lot more detail on the website, but pretty much nonessential businesses statewide will be closing. Any community gatherings, nonessential community gatherings of any size for any reason must be canceled. If you have to leave your home, you cannot travel in groups. Everyone should keep at least six feet away from each other whenever possible. Businesses that provide other essential services should implement rules that help keep social distancing. So, if you are going out to the grocery store or you are going out to the gas station, you know, there's going to be a lot of effort about still trying to keep social distancing, even when we are in businesses that are considered essential. You should limit your outdoor recreational activities to non-contact and activities or anything that would require to come in contact with people. Individuals should limit use of public transportation when necessary. And if you're sick, you need to stay home and only go out unless you have to fill critical needs or to get medical care. And also, there's a strong urge to use telehealth, and I know there's a lot of physicians in our community that are learning how to do that over the internet, to provide telehealth visits, to see if leaving home is the best thing for you to do. Young people, which is, I think, one of the most biggest discussion points out there today, is how our younger people who are from college and are teenagers, they need to practice social distancing too. Just because you're young, you are just as likely to get this, and infect others who might have this be a greater health risk for them. So, it's very important, no matter what the age, that you practice social distancing. Another part of the... In terms of the essential businesses, there's a huge list available. Essential workers were defined by 16 infrastructure sectors by the federal government, and that is what the state of Connecticut is following. But it does include grocery stores, gas stations, hardware stores, healthcare providers, liquor stores. I've had a lot of people ask about that as well. I think your trash will still get picked up. You can actually still go to the vet if you need to. So, there is a number of a very long list. I mean, it's very long, but we will also have it on the website. You can go to Governor Lamont's website, who has an extensive list of what is essential versus nonessential. This just got put in place, I think that was on Friday, so I think people are still trying to scramble to understand what it means. He also rolled out a number, our governor, additional executive orders over the weekend dealing with essential meetings in town government, the budget process, land use requirements and for zoning, tax filing deadlines, and many statutory requirements on public hearings. So, it's a very long, comprehensive list, and we're trying to work through it now in town government to see what that means in terms of how we function and also how we provide services to the community and how we include the public in our governance, how we handle town meetings going forward, how we're going to vote for our budget. So, there's a lot to decipher and get through, and we will get you more information as it becomes available. We're working with council. I'm working closely with the Chair of the Board of Finance, as well as the Board of Education, and we'll be reaching out to other board and commission leaders to see what this means in terms of how your boards will function. So, lots to digest, but we're on top of it, and we're doing the best we can to kind of give directives to the public on that. So, in terms of, I guess I'll move on to the next point I wanted to talk about, and I apologize if the board... Do you have any specific questions in that area that I've interviewed? Looking up at the screen now. Trying to figure this out. So, the next thing is I wanted to give an update on our emergency operations here, and Sam, I think it was our Director of Emergency Services, so please come up and get in the hot seat. And maybe give the community just a little bit of an overview about what we're doing from an emergency operations standpoint.
So, the last week, we've been doing a lot of planning to, in case we do get an influx of people that come down with this illness. Fortunately, we've been so far, we've been fortunate. You know, it hasn't been too bad, but looking at the way it's kind of creeped into Fairfield County from New York, we're kind of expecting it to creep into Haven County as well and have these cases go up. So, we're trying to make preparations to make our first responders safe, so that they can respond to the calls, we need to keep all them healthy, the police, fire, EMS. We are looking at different avenues to acquire personal protective equipment for them, since there's such a shortage nationwide. So, that's... Some of those are coming to fruition, and there is a lot of people in the community that are dropping off protective equipment as well, masks and stuff like that, and we appreciate that as well. So, thank you very much, all those people that are doing that. And there's even some people that are making masks in their downtime, and they're going to drop them off at the police station. So, all that help is very grateful to all the first responders. And that's about it. We're not out of the wood yet with this. You know, it's probably going to be kind of a long haul, unfortunately. We're taking it day by day. We're in contact with the state daily, you know, as far as resources and whatever things we should do, report come without a run.
And I think, just so the public is aware, that we are meeting every other day, mostly by Zoom now, but maybe one or two people in person. And we have a set emergency operations center that was partially open. That's part of our response plan, and that includes, you know, public safety, fire, EMS, you know. It includes facilities, includes a kind of core team here that oversees emergency operations in town government, and we meet on a regular basis, as well as our, obviously, our Health Director too. So, it was an important part of that. So, there has been continual dialogue, discussion, brainstorming, ways to problem solve, and also planning that we're doing. So, we're prepared for all situations in town. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any questions for the board?
Thanks, Sam.
Okay. The next update is from our Director of Health, Trent Joseph. Hope you're joining us here. He's on the front lines, I will say.
Good evening, everyone. So, first off, I just want to say I reach out to some of the small businesses out there, our food establishments, our daycares, our salons and/or cosmetology establishments. You guys continue to hold strong and hold tight. I'll provide necessary updates for you guys as I get them. For the food establishments out there, if you haven't got the email that was sent today, I'm going to resend it, a couple of emails bounce back. We're ahead of the game in terms of what's approved for operations at this time. You know, we just need to stress the social distancing. So, the email you get, it's going to have an update on, you know, how to provide a little bit more space between the customers or patrons that come for service, you know, maybe marking out the sidewalks and giving more responsibility to your staff as you're working. Daycares, I know there's a lot of talk about opening up for first responder and healthcare workers. The hospitals are reaching out to towns. Nobody's reached out to me yet, so at this time, the update is going to be consistent with Governor Lamont's. So, everybody needs to remain closed until I get an update, and we'll soon update you on whatever to expect coming down that's forthcoming. Now, the update in terms of the big picture, what's going on in Connecticut, right now we have 327 confirmed cases, 51 hospitalized, and eight deaths. Currently, right now, Madison is only logged for one positive case, but there is a little discrepancy in how we're getting the numbers. So, just to give you a background, it's a four-way communication before local health department gets notification of a positive case. It first starts at the lab, then the lab sends it to the PCP, then the PCP sends it to DPH, or the lab will send it to DPH if that person never coordinated with their PCP. But then it gets to DPH, and DPH then has to upload it to a database, which may take, you know, who knows how long. So, we can assume that we have anywhere from zero to five cases right now, even though my database only has one in Madison. I've been coordinating with a lot of other PCPs and healthcare professionals, infectious prevention lists at Yale, and it's just, I'm sure we have zero to five right now, and we'll give you an update soon as we get those numbers straight away, squared away, sorry. For those of you who can obtain a doctor's order, which is required for to get tested, I do have a resource in New London. So, if the drive-through... So, if you're able to get a doctor's note, and you don't know where and when you can get this test, contact the health department. We'll look to get you an appointment in New London, and we'll try to fast-track that for you as soon as we can. We also have, also got a call from Doc's Urgent Care. They have facilities in East Haven and North Haven, again, not the closest to Madison. Hopefully, we'll get something a little closer to us. I get it. They're also doing tests in there. So, if you're able to obtain that doctor's order, that doctor's note, reach out to me. If they can't schedule an appointment for you sooner, I'll contact somebody, and we'll try to get that fast-track for you as well. Just a side note, after, you know, all this conversation, you know, I want to stress and please, everyone, do everything you can to practice social distancing. It's very, very important for social distancing and self-isolation for the health and safety of your families. It's something that's even for the millennial population or demographic and older, something that for some reason is hard to understand, but it's very important that we do that to slow the spread of COVID-19. We can all assume that COVID is prevalent in our towns, and community transmission is going on as we speak. So, protect yourself. Before I end with the general protection, I just want to put something else out there just as a side note, just so we can look at this as a bigger picture. You know, right now is a good time to attain to mental health as well. I think if we're starting to get anxious, it's a good time to start some small projects at home, not only give you a sense of control, but it'll keep you away from dwelling in all the hours that you're putting into looking at the news. You know, check in for information, but don't obsess, all right? You know, we're going to do our best to update you as well, but maybe check in and make those overdue phone calls with, you know, families, you know, families or friends or neighbors. Use the extra time. Those of you who are maybe out of school right now, use the extra time, if you can, at home, you know, use the extra time to improve your physical and your physical health and boost your immune system, maybe eat a healthier diet, something with more fruit and more vegetables. You're not going to be able to get the takeout that you like anyway right now, at least not that fast. You know, get, you know, play ball outside, you know, do some overdue yard work, dance with a partner, spend some time stretching. Even meditation works as well, all right? And please don't underestimate the power of sleep. Try to get seven to nine hours of sleep every day. Keep a regular sleep pattern. All this stuff is going to help this situation get by, and we're all going to get through this crisis together. I just want you to understand that. And I definitely trust and believe we have a good team in Madison now, you know, alongside with Sam DeBurr, Chief Drum, Austin Hall, Chris Ranaire. Everybody we've been working with, Bob, Peggy, all the Board of Selectmen, everybody, Tom Skiris, Bill McMinn, Austin Hall, everybody, we've all been working together, and I'm very confident that we're going to get through this together. That's all I have for right now.
Any questions for, from the board for Trent?
I have one, if you don't mind. I don't know, it's either to Trent or to you, Peggy, but just a reminder to folks about how cases get notified to you and the town. I think there's been some question out on social media about a number of cases identified, and there was a particular town employee that they were talking about at one point, which I do believe actually was a resident of another town. So, I just think we need to get clarity on how that process actually works and how it flows back to you.
I appreciate that question, Scott. So, that's another thing, no health, no local health department in town is, we're not relying on, not to speak directly to your comments, Scott, but I've been getting other comments like that as well, you know, comments on social media or somebody putting something on Facebook. The health department can't use that as legitimate information to confirm a case. So, the way that we normally and routinely get notification is from the Department of Public Health through an electronic database, which I check three times a day. I think now, considering this, I check it probably every two hours. And another notification would be directly from a PCP or the hospital. And some of our EMS, some of our first responders, like EMS, they may get some notification through the hospital as well. So, that's technically how the health department gets notified, though, through the DPH electronic database.
Hugely helpful, thanks.
Right. And there is a lag time, you know, because it has to travel from the lab to the PCP, and the PCP has talked to DPH, so, you know, they're all busy. So, you can imagine a result on a table for maybe four or six days before it gets to my office. So, I've been very, you know, I mean, I've been calling everybody as much as I can, as PCPs and hospitals, to get information updated. But Scott, another thing, I forgot to mention the importance of washing your hands, cleaning and disinfecting common surfaces, avoid touching your face, and please, stay at home. That's correct.
Just me or everybody else?
Everybody. Everybody. Any other questions?
I have a quick question. What if you don't have a primary care physician locally? Say you're somebody that just doesn't go to the doctor often, and so, but now you're experiencing symptoms. What should you do? Who should you call?
Right. So, there's two ways that you can address that situation if you don't have a primary care provider. Well, number one, by law, the hospital cannot deny you entry into the emergency room. That's number one. Number two is there are urgent care facilities like Doc's Urgent Care in North Haven and East Haven. I would call ahead of time to get information if you have to, if you feel like you need to visit the urgent care facility. Call ahead of time, see what their policy and procedures are. They might want you to wear PPE. They may ask you... wear PPE, they may ask you a little bit about your background and what symptoms you have at this time, and then they'll set you up with an appointment and they'll get you on board with everything you need to know. Again, just also clarification on testing, if you do not have any symptoms, you do not need to be tested, and you should be staying home and monitoring your symptoms anyway. And once you do think that you have symptoms that may be COVID, you should contact that PCP or that urgent care provider just for more guidance and clarification on what your situation is.
And I know there was also a hotline, Yale had set up?
Yes.
Is that, should you call that too or is that for separate?
Yeah, for general questions about COVID, we've posted that on the Madison webpage. You can call 211, those are just general questions that they answer, that those are not individuals who have symptoms or who are looking to get tested. That's a general information hotline.
And keep in mind, we couldn't test last week really, there weren't tests available. And now it's obviously becoming, you know, more capable of the state and our health system is able to provide more testing, so that's why we're going to see more positives. You can't assume that more testing doesn't mean more people, it means that we're just able to identify the people who have it.
Correct, and identifying the occurrence of disease is a very important aspect in epidemiology, and before we can get ahead of this virus, we're going to have to see how this thing grows exponentially, the dose response curve, if you will. So the other thing is, there is no different treatment to if you got tested or you haven't been tested. The treatment essentially is the same if you're a positive case or you're just someone who hasn't been tested with COVID symptoms. You still would have to stay home, self-isolate and self-monitor until you're free of symptoms.
Great, any other questions?
I have one more comment, sorry, I'm never shy. So I noticed today that our Madison Youth and Family Services has put out a laying down the challenge to Trent's point earlier about focusing on your mental health. They're helping to spread positivity and keep the community connected in the next couple of weeks by putting some chalk drawings on the end of your driveway, so just to rally the community a little bit and to help focus on a positive message for them. So I thought that was kind of what you were speaking about earlier Trent, I think that was pretty neat stuff.
Yeah, it's a good one Scott.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much Trent, I appreciate it very much, he's been working very hard and a great resource and making it all with the team, we appreciate all your hard work. The next update, public safety, so Chief Drum, if you wouldn't mind, I think the camera's just trying to take the screen behind me, so.
Thank you, Trent, that was Siri on my phone trying to do some research for you.
Hold on just a second.
Good evening Madison, I assure you, you're safe. All the services are available, all the services are answering the calls, all have full compliments of staff, including us speaking to the police department. Anybody that had a cold or even whispered they had a cold, we had to stay home and we're fully staffed. Patrols, we're out there doing our regular patrols, we are keeping an eye on some of the businesses, we're also keeping an eye on supply chains that do come into town, so I want to assure you that there will not be disruptions. As far as administrative requests to the police department, those have been reduced because personnel have been sent home. Some of those we cannot do at this time, it will be postponed. That includes fingerprinting permits and other administrative report requests. We hope that we'll return that to regular duty sometime in the near future hopefully before the middle of April. As was stated earlier, stay home, stay safe. We did have discussions with the state today, I have those probably bi-weekly regards to policing within the state of Connecticut. I assure you there are plenty of police officers to go around, we've also enlisted some of the departments that had put some officers on furlough or then were being utilized now within the state system. Example, the college campus had about 50, 60 officers and they'll need about 20 to do security around the school. Those offices are put into a response for other towns if needed, and that goes on in Madison, I want to assure you that we have that. If you have a routine call for service, I ask that you call the main number at the police department, not 911. If you have a routine call for service, an event, a fraud, credit card, somebody may be compromised, call our main number at 203-245-2721, 203-245-2721 to report that and have an officer get back to you relatively soon on the phone. Also have a current phone number, if you call through your home line and you're now walking around your home or outside, have your cell phone on, use that number. As far as when an officer does come to your home for a call for service, we ask that you meet them at the door if you could, so there's no delay of time. Other than that, I don't have much more information to give you in regards to the updates, we're getting that from all the services, I assure you that everybody's working very well together. We'll get through this, this will pass. Any questions?
Quick question, animal control, is that still?
That is operational.
Operational, okay, I know some people asking about that.
No, that is operational as well as we're maintaining the kennel in Clinton.
Okay, great, and in terms of how our neighboring communities, are they kind of operating status quo with you, kind of, are staff similar and, you know, is there going to be resource sharing at one point possibly, you know, if you have some issues with your staff?
We have under state statute, we have mutual aid partners, actually all of them, most of them in the Haven County, and also the town of Clinton and Middlesex, you know, Sabre. Subsequently, we have placed our contingencies for events that may occur. Example, if there were a contamination to the dispatch center, we then go to our contingent 911 dispatch centers for operation. Also, for covering of patrols, we do use officers in each other's towns during the night routinely, absent as events, so I don't see any disruption to that protocol.
Great, great, good to know lots of resources available. Any questions for the chief?
Jeannie, could you nod if you heard that?
It's a great picture, Jamie.
Thank you.
This is not my first Zoom meeting, I know I'm a little bit.
I wish I could do one of those actually.
I'll help you for the next minute.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Jean, we appreciate all the hard work you're doing as well. So in terms of essential town services, just as, you know, Chief Drum was speaking to police, fire department, ambulance, dispatch services, all critical public safety services are operational and running as normal, and so you can rely on all of those. In terms of town hall and a lot of the day-to-day operations of town government, most all of our employees now are working remotely, and I have to give Art Signal and the IT team, Steve is here today, and, you know, working very hard to make this happen. Town government is not used to working remotely, that's not a common thing for most municipal governments, but in a very short order, they were able to pull this together and make sure that people have the resources they need and be functional and do as many services as possible to people remotely, so hats off to them. And by the way, we share them with the schools, and so they're working triple duty, I think, at this point, because all the remote access programming and everything that the schools are working on, Art and his team are having to implement for the schools and for the town. So they've been very busy to be able to set up Zoom like this, to get equipment in place and to try to be as responsive to the community. So we're grateful that we can offer a lot of this help. I know there was some functions, essential services, functions that I had some questions from the community, and I'll just briefly talk about two, because I think these were some where I had the most questions. The town clerk will be rotating staff into the office to make sure that mail, telephone and email are all being addressed. Banks title searches and attorneys are asked to search land records online at USlandrecords.com, anything from May 8, 1972 to current, and that information will be on the website too, but recordings will be processed by mailing them to the town clerk's office, and you can request the recording receipt be mailed or faxed back to you. Vital records, request form and directions can be found in the town clerk website, mail your request and the certified copy will be returned to you by mail. Ensure that the town clerk's office is working closely with all funeral homes as needed. And there's a lot of services the town clerk provides that are required by state law, and so we are adhering to everything that we're required to provide and the town clerk is actively doing that. The presidential primary, many of you might have heard, has been postponed to June 2nd. So right now you can still request an absentee ballot application, which you can get on the town clerk website and still submit that. Residents will also be receiving their 2020 census letter by mail, you should have gotten one by now, I guess a number of people have, I haven't, and you can fill that out online or by telephone. So she just is encouraging you to do that. And then the other area that I thought we've gotten a number of questions from are the tax collector's office, and tax payments can be made online at the website, www.madisonct.org. There is a convenience fee charged for credit card payments and a nominal fee paid to do electronic checks, and then you can also just mail it in, and so those will all be collected and recorded as mail service is still continuing to behave as normal. And you can also do a telephone payment through point and pay, and that's also on the website. You can also ask questions about payments and you can have information emailed back to you, so just leave a message with your question and your email address and they will email you back with a response to your question. And then the Department of Motor Vehicle Clearances, which I think people had had questions on that, are uploaded on a nightly basis. And then in terms of they're just available for customer service, so call their office, And so right now, they're fully operational, will be continuing to offer any services that the community needs. So those are two groups I thought I'd highlight for today, because we've had a lot of questions about that. In terms of our facilities, as the community is aware of, all our town facilities are closed to the public. Some people are working in the building still, but minimal amounts, most are remote, and we're using, for example, the senior center as a drop application for food donations as well as medical supplies and PPE for the first responder community, you can drop things off there. And so you'll see kind of cars coming and going in town hall, but these are usually people that have critical services to deal with or need to come in for, you know, business purposes only, but nothing is open to the public. So that's kind of the status quo on facilities, which I think the community has been given a lot of information on that over the last week as we've had to close things down. In terms of governance issues, I think just as highlighting, we're working with town council to figure out how to implement a lot of these executive orders. So if you're a volunteer and a boarder commission and watching this, more information will be provided. I think we suspended all board and commission meetings through March 31st, except for elected boards, which was at the discretion of the chair, and more information on the calendar will be forthcoming, because part of this is, we don't have unlimited live streaming capabilities and we still have to provide some public access to any type of board and commission meeting. So I know we've had board members say, well, why can't we just hold a Zoom meeting? Well, in order to still adhere to the law as it stands now, even with the changes, you still have to have an opportunity for the public to watch the meeting, and so we'll have to work through how we can make that happen from a practical standpoint going forward, and that's why we ask boards and commissions to focus on essential business only, and we'll talk more about the schedule for that soon. Once we have a more clear directive, we'll get you more information out there. So from a governance standpoint, also I know people have questions about the budget and, you know, town meetings, and we're working through all that. These orders just came out Saturday and Sunday and they continue to evolve, so we will get, you know, answers to questions and guidelines as soon as we can. So any questions on governance issues from the board or town operations or anything? Nope? Okay, all right. Next item is community assistance initiatives, and we have Austin Hall here, who is the Director of Senior Services, and he's been working closely with Scott Cochran, with Madison Youth and Family Services to focus on, we know a lot of our community is struggling right now and in a period of uncertainty, and so we're trying to provide our resources and advice we can, as much as we can, so I'll let Austin.
So myself and Scott Cochran, who's my fellow department head from Youth and Family Services, and our respective teams in our departments have been working to respond to the needs of all Madison residents, and I'm going to read to you a few email addresses that you can contact as well as phone numbers for different groups in town. So if you would like to volunteer, we have opportunities for you to do that. If you would like to go grocery shopping for someone in town, run errands, go to the pharmacy, you can respond to or send an email to madisonwillriseforvolunteers@madisonct.org. Now, all these emails will be available on the town websites, you can check for those tomorrow, but that email address again is madisonwillriseforvolunteers@madisonct.org. What we will require of these volunteers is a form, an application, and a waiver will be filled out as long as, as well as a valid driver's license that we will need a copy for our files. If you are an adult or family under the age of 65, Madison Youth and Family Services is able to provide assistance with mental health, grocery shopping, pharmacy runs, errands, et cetera, and the email address for that is madisonwillrise@madisonct.org, or you can contact Youth and Family Services by phone at 203-245-5645. I'll say that again, madisonwillrise@madisonct.org or by phone at 203-245-5645. And if you are a Madison resident age 65 and over, my department, the senior services department can assist you with those same items, mental health, grocery shopping, pharmacy errands, et cetera. And the email address to respond to that is madisonwillriseforseniors@madisonct.org, or you can call our main telephone number, which is 203-245-5627. Once again, madisonwillriseforseniors@madisonct.org, or 203-245-5627 is our telephone number. And as Peggy said, we are accepting food donations at the senior center. At our entrance on Bradley Road, there's a blue bin that you can put your donations in and we'll bring them into the senior center when we see them. And I think as Trent said before too, if you, now's a great time to contact if you have an elderly neighbor, family in town, anyone in general in Madison that you think needs a phone call or to be checked in on, now's a great time to do that. It's great for social distancing, plus it's a great community service to our fellow neighbors and friends in town. Give someone a call, ask if they need anything, or if they don't need anything, just to have a 10-minute conversation with them is a great way to spend some time during this time. Any questions?
Austin or Peggy, are those email addresses going to be on the website or something? They're obviously pretty long email addresses, so.
Yeah, those will be listed on the town website tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm just curious, how many organizations do you have that have talked to you about this?
So we've talked to Madison Community Services, the Chamber of Commerce, many restaurants in town, and then all these, most of it is individuals in town who are volunteering, but we have 20 individuals ready to go right now that we've taken applications for, gotten IDs and ready to go, so now we're in the mode of getting folks who need the assistance and reaching out to them.
That's great, phenomenal, that's great, and I think one thing is, how do we get to the people that are in need if they don't have access to, you know, the internet or...
So we have an emergency call list in my department, which has about 100 names on it, and we are going through that entire list and calling people weekly to check in on them, not only as a welfare check, but to ask if they need any assistance. And as far as Scott Cochran and Youth and Family, they're And, um, as far as Scott Cochran and Youth and Family, uh, their Facebook pages, a lot of the ways they interact with their folks, so they're, they're reaching out to them that way.
Great. Any, any questions, uh, for Austin? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all the work you guys are doing. It's, it's great. Uh, because I know we've gotten so many different phone calls from the community and now we have a way to channel all those people that want to help out, which is great. Uh, I also had in here local businesses and, uh, Bruce, if you could provide an update, uh, kind of what your task force is doing and, you know, briefly, I know you just kind of started organizing this team, but, um, maybe just give us an update on where it is.
We can hear you, Bruce. You're on mute.
We're on mute.
All right. Your dog was barking, it had to be.
My, my dog was getting fussy, sorry. Yeah. So the, the, uh, the task force met on Friday. It's, uh, it's Ryan Duquesne, Ily Vanish, myself, Dave Anderson, Christine Cohen, Senator Cohen is, is, is joining us as is Norine Koguruta. Um, and, and really we frame over pretty high level objectives. Um, we're working to, uh, come up with ideas to help businesses conserve cash. Um, in, uh, in, in these unprecedented times, uh, cash is everything to a business. We're also looking at how we spread this economic shock out, uh, across as much of our, uh, community, state and federal infrastructure as possible with the idea that, um, no one entity or individual bears the brunt and that we all get through this together. And then lastly, um, how can we creatively search out ways to, uh, deploy cash back into the community and, uh, and to facilitate that process? And, um, and that cash could come from consumers, it could come from the town, it could come from the state and the Fed. We've not really had an opportunity to identify any specifics around these spots, um, but we are working, um, to, uh, be a resource to our local businesses, uh, for the emerging need, um, um, that is, is coming. And I, I can tell you that the state is, is working, uh, quite diligently, uh, to identify both grants and, um, low interest bridge loans, uh, through state SBA, through the, um, or the state branch of the SBA, the DECD, um, which is the Department of Economic Development for the state. Um, and, uh, our state representatives are advocating on behalf of businesses to allow them to keep, uh, cash that they take in, for instance, sales taxes that they collect, uh, allow businesses to keep those sales taxes, uh, and rather than submit them to the state. The idea being that that's cash that they have on hand, that, that they can then, um, use to keep people employed, um, to make sure that they're paying their rent, um, and and stuff like that. We are, uh, planning a Zoom meeting. Uh, we'll be organizing it through the Chamber of Commerce. We'll be inviting, um, local businesses and quite frankly, anybody who wants to join on, uh, probably looking at one o'clock on Friday, um, to talk to community about some of the things that we've identified for action and then to solicit input from the business community about what they think they need to see. So, uh, unfortunately, things aren't happening fast enough, but I do think things are happening as quickly as they, as they possibly can. And, uh, there are a lot of people working on this, um, at the local level and, and also up at the state level. I know that they're meeting tonight at the state, state leadership, which is the four caucuses of General Assembly and Governor's Office to talk about how they're going to deploy cash back into small businesses in Connecticut. So we're, we're anxiously awaiting, um, the results of that meeting and, and what actions might come from it. So, uh, a couple of things I would like to say, um, there are resources available, um, to local businesses and they should, um, either direct themselves to the town website or to the Chamber of Commerce website. Um, and if anybody has any questions, whether you're a member of the chamber or not, if you're a small business owner, um, please do reach out to the chamber and the questions will get, uh, either answered on the spot or you'll be directed to a resource who can, who can get the question answered for you. So, uh, good to see if I have any other, um, notes. I mean, I, I think that, that's pretty much it. We're, we're in, in contact with each other and are, are planning the meeting on Friday, the Zoom.
Great, no, thank you. I think it's great, all of the effort. And, you know, if you're out there watching this and you are a small business owner, um, you know, this is to help everybody. It's not just focused on retail or restaurants coming to storefronts that we typically think of as our local businesses, but I know a lot of people run things out of their home. Um, and so, um, please see this as a resource as well and don't hesitate to reach out. Um, you know, the links will be available on the website and we'll try to get you as much information about what the state is doing and, and what we can do locally as, as much as possible.
Great, I, and, and actually I would like to clarify, so with this essential, non-essential business designation, um, if your business is not designated as essential, that doesn't mean you have to close yours. Um, if you can conduct business online or, um, outside of your normal offices in, in spirit of curbside, uh, service, you can do that. Um, if you can't do any of those things, um, you are still allowed to go in to your office and take care of essential business preservation activities. So, um, if you're not an essential business, it doesn't mean that you have to shutter your doors if you can't do anything. And I know that question has come up.
Great. Okay, thanks Bruce. Any, any comments from the board? Bruce, questions? No? Um, okay, great. And then I know Erin, you had mentioned, uh, Erin was, uh, or board member Erin Duquesne, um, was going to just kind of have a, a point of contact with the local, um, nursing home facilities, um, and elder care facilities. I don't know if there's anything you, you want to update us on Erin, just to cut the issues they're facing?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I spoke with, I spoke with the Madison House and, and the Harts and they, they said that things are going fine. The biggest challenge that they're having is supplies, uh, personal protective equipment. Um, they said they have enough currently, but they're having difficult getting in particular gowns. Um, so is that something that they're working on? And perhaps we can try to think creatively. Uh, one person had said maybe if there are dentist's office or other offices that are currently closed that have some, maybe they could be donated. Um, but other than that, they said they're checking to the temperature of staff and, um, residents every day. They've had no cases, um, so things are, are kind of chugging along.
And they're correctly under lockdown essentially, right? Members of the public cannot access that. Is that also true in the Harts?
Right.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, because I know that they have a more of a assisted living function, but.
Erin, if you don't mind, uh, this is Trent Joseph. Can you hear me?
Sure, hi Trent.
Uh, so, uh, yeah, so me and, uh, Chris, uh, you're in there, we did, uh, at the, maybe mid to end of February, we did, uh, face-to-face walkthroughs of all our, uh, healthcare facilities or nursing homes, um, just to make sure that they had policies and procedures in place, uh, anticipating that this was going to come down the line. So they were actually, uh, well prepared, um, for this and now they're at lockdown. So we, we expected that, that shortage in supplies, but we're just glad that they have the, the internalized policies to keep themselves, the patients and, uh, the, the workers safe.
Yeah, and I think, um, when I, we're trying to just have a, a line of communication on non-medical related type of thing, so I think, uh.
Right.
And, um.
Yeah, that's great.
And then, uh, so, and we're also, we have contacts with the major businesses in town, essential businesses, the large grocery stores and, uh, CBS as well. So we'll have a direct line of communication with them. Um, so I think, uh, any other questions or comments from the board?
Uh, Peggy.
Yeah?
I'm, I'm the person who's in touch with CBS.
Yeah.
And, uh, one plea from CBS was that if folks are not feeling well, please don't come into the store to be evaluated or to pick up your meds. They will make other arrangements to get the meds to you.
Okay, so they should just contact them by phone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, also Stop &amp; Shop runs a pharmacy, so I guess that's interesting. I mean, I've been in contact with Stop &amp; Shop and we're just talking about how they get their food, you know, how frequently their shipments are, things like that. So we're just on top of it. But you raise a question about the pharmacy and how, you know, that's managed within the store. Um, so, uh, but it, you know, more to follow up and talk to them about that.
Peggy, can I just, one quick thing on Roberts too?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, I know I've raised this to you and to Trent, but just more for the boards, uh, as well, that Roberts has asked, um, the board and Peggy's office to consider looking at the, um, ordinance regarding, uh, the plastic bag ordinance and people bringing in their, uh, reusable bags, but less about those than the use of paper bags and whether or not, um, they would continue to need to charge people to use paper bags, thinking that that might be a, a better way to, um, prevent germs and things like that from coming in their store. So I know, we've, we've talked a little bit about that with Trent, um, but there may be something for us to consider in the past. Right now they're having to charge their customers for those bags.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, there's a worthwhile discussion on a number of things that we could relax or, you know, just to be acknowledging the, you know, what can remove stress from people's lives. Um, we're reviewing a lot of those things in, uh, town government right now and I think that would be, uh, possible to bring up at the next board meeting where there might be action needed to do that. So, uh, more to come on all of that. Okay, um, any other comments from the board or anything? Because the next thing, just for the public's benefit, we actually adjourn into what's called the executive session, which is not available to the public and, and it, it's just an opportunity for us to interact with, um, uh, some town officials about more details and on planning that we're doing under this public health emergency. Uh, so I guess from that, if any, the board has any other final questions? Um, and I think, um, just real quickly, I want to thank the public for joining us and we'll be doing more of these, um, so please keep monitoring the town website. Um, and if there's anything you want to hear us talk about at these meetings that you think we're not addressing, please email the board, uh, on the, on the board of selectmen page, or you can just click one email and we'll all get the same email. Um, please don't hesitate to send us your questions or concerns. Um, and with that, I, um, I would like to, uh, move to, uh, adjourn to executive session. Okay. All right, and I'd like, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. And I want to invite, sorry, I want to, yeah, I would like to invite, yes, I would like to invite Jack from San Deborah, Trent Joseph and Lauren Rhines into the executive session. I always forget to do that.
What's the, did we want Jeanne to come in too, or?
Um, I mean, I, she's welcome to join us if she wants, uh, sure. Inviting Jeanne as well.